Good evening. This is the 13th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. Please join me in a moment of silence if everyone would please join me in a moment of silence and then remain outstanding for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will call the role of the members?
President Young, Cohen Scott, Henry Schleifer, Middleton Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokcine Clark, Mr. President, we will quorum.
Thank you. This evening we welcome Samira Franklin of Baltimore Youth Organizing Project who is our guest for showcase today.
Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon, like he just said. My name is Samira Franklin. I'm the lead organizer with BOP. It stands for Baltimore Youth Organizing Project, a youth organizing initiative created by Build and the No Boundaries Coalition after the unrest. I'm also a recent graduate of Historic Weston High School and I have resided in Sandtown for most of my life. Sandtown, a community where youth are oftentimes severely marginalized by the officials who are in positions of power in this city. The youth are usually the first to be defunded and not invested in by many in city government as vital, essential members of the community. Young people across this city are criminalized for being young, unengaged, and powerless. I can remember that feeling after the unrest, where I felt powerless and confused. I had almost no faith in adults in our city and their ability to prioritize youth. Adults in our community sometimes view us as a menace or threat and some don't see us at all. After the unrest, in partnership with Build and No Boundaries, BOP, we listened to over 400 young people's main concerns, and those were our after-school programs, community schools, and rec centers. As candidate, Mayor Pugh committed to holding after-school communities funding safe, excuse me, for her entire term, and it's done. The entire city council stood for the youth of Baltimore and said enough. We can no longer disinvest in the youth of Baltimore. We at No Boundaries, Build, BOP, and Child First, and all of the youth advocates who fought to make this happen, want to thank you. City Council President Young, we want to thank you for making it possible for almost 5,000 young people to be able to continue to attend their school, after-school program and their community school. Councilman Costello, we thank you for your leadership as the Chair of the Budget Committee. Councilman Cohen, we thank you for your hard work as the Chair of the Education Committee. And Mary Pat Clark, we celebrate you as our champion. And to the entire council, of course, thank you very much. This is historic. Never before has the entire council been on the same accord for the youth of Baltimore. We all thank Mayor Pugh for her negotiations and for an investment in the youth of Baltimore and for truly championing young people in our city. As Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark stated, this cannot be perennial. We cannot continue this fight every year. As residents, advocates, and organizers, elected officials as well, we came together in the interest of youth in Baltimore. Well done. We want to thank the council and the mayor for your dedication and your determination to make sure the youth of Baltimore are heard and respected. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. She's a very hard worker, very, I don't know how to put it, but she's a tireless advocate. They challenged me at one of their meetings and made me feel like I couldn't even, you know, I couldn't stand up to them. I mean, she was just, "Y'all gonna do this, you're gonna do that." I said, "Wow, who is this young lady?" But she, I admire you. Keep up the great work. You're a future leader in the city of Baltimore and keep fighting for young people as we fight together to make opportunities available for our young people. So again, thank you. Okay, the journal from the June 12 special meeting will be adopted at the next city council meeting. We have no bills or resolutions to be introduced. We will now move the bills on second reader, Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0084, supplemental general fund operating appropriation, Baltimore City Public Schools, $3 million for the purpose of providing a supplemental general fund operating appropriation, an amount of $3 million to Baltimore City Public Schools, Service 352, to provide funding for an additional operating expenses and providing for a special effective date.
Chair, recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, the Budget and Appropriations Committee held a hearing on this bill. I would like to remind my colleagues that this $3 million supplemental appropriation is part of a multi-year agreement with Mayor Pugh and her administration. That agreement accounts for $3 million this year, as well as an additional $3 million in each of fiscal year '19 and fiscal year '20. That will result in an additional $700,000 in fiscal year '19, as well as fiscal year '20, as a result of the guaranteed tax base formula, as part of the state formulas. With that, I'd like to move the bill favorably.
Second by Vice Chairman Pinkett. All in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion to approve this bill moves to third reader. Chair, recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I forgot to note on that previous one, that part of that agreement was that the council would not be seeking additional funds specifically for Baltimore City Public School System in fiscal '19 and '20 as part of that multi-year agreement. Mr. President, we held a hearing on this bill today. This is a portion of the $1.5 million agreement, or portion of our agreement, with respect to Safe Streets, and this money will be coming out of fund balance as a result of surplus. At this time, I move the bill favorably.
Second by Council Vice Chairman Pinkett. Hold it for a minute. Chairman Costello, you have to move the bill from second to third reader.
My apologies.
I think you got ahead.
Mr. President, on Bill 17-0084, I move to invoke Council Rule 12-1 to move that bill to third reader at the same meeting.
Second by Chairman Pinkett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion have it. This motion, current bill 170084, will be voted on when we get to the third reader portion of the agenda. Chair, recognize Chairman Costello.
City Council Bill 17-0085, supplemental general fund operating appropriation, Health Department, $600,000 for the purpose of providing a supplemental general fund operating appropriation, an amount of $600,000 to the Health Department, Service 316, to provide funding for additional operating expenses and providing for a special effective date.
Chair, recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on this bill today. As my colleagues know, there was $200,000 originally programmed for Safe Streets. This is an additional $600,000 as part of the total $1.7 million commitment to Safe Streets. At this time, I'd like to move this bill favorably.
Second by Chairman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve this bill moves to third reader.
Mr. President?
You have to make the motion, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I move to invoke Council Rule 12-1 to move City Council Bill 17-0085 to third reader at the same meeting.
Second by Chairman Pinkett. All those in favor of, Vice Chair Pinkett, what did I say? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion, current Council Bill 170085, will be voted on when we get to the third reader portion of the agenda.
City Council Bill 17-0086, general fund operating appropriation transfer, transferring the aggregate amount of $3,830,000 from various agency services to the Health Department and to MR educational grants, for the purpose of transferring a general fund operating appropriation in the aggregate amount of $3,830,000 from various agency services to the Health Department, and the aggregate amount of $900,000, and to MR educational grants, and the aggregate amount of $2,930,000, and providing for a special effective date.
Chair, recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Appropriations Committee held a hearing on this today. This bill accounts for transfers from the following accounts: the Innovation Fund, Service 833, in the amount of $520,000; the Office of Employment Development, Service 793, in the amount of $700,000; Department of Public Works, Service 661, in the amount of $300,000; Service 66300, Public Works, in the amount of $800,000; Department of Transportation, Service 500, in the amount of $830,000; Department of Human Resources, Service 771, in the amount of $360,000; and Mayor ality-related miscellaneous general expenses, Service 122, in the amount of $320,000. This will be transferred to cover $900,000 worth of funding for Safe Streets, $176,000 for AARP Experience Core, $170,000 for University of Maryland Baltimore, or University of Maryland Cooperative Extension, $2.58 million for after-school and community school programming to be transferred to the Baltimore City Foundation. And I will note to my colleagues that the remaining $150,000 of our agreement with the mayor is to be funded through the Baltimore City Foundation and not through either of the supplementals or the transfer. With that, I'd move the bill favorably, Mr. President.
Second by Chairman, Vice Chairman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve. Chair, recognize Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke Council Rule 12-1 to move City Council Bill 17-0086 to third reader at the same meeting.
Second by Vice Chair Pinkett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion, current Council Bill 170086, will be voted on when we get to the third reader portion of the agenda. Third reader requiring, third reader, third reader requiring invocation of Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement.
City Council Bill 17-0084, supplemental general fund operating appropriation, Baltimore City Public Schools, $3 million for the purpose of providing a supplemental general fund operating appropriation, an amount of $3 million to Baltimore City Public Schools, Service 352, to provide funding for additional operating expenses and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen Scott, Cohen Dorsey, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokcine Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0085, supplemental general fund operating appropriation, Health Department, $600,000 for the purpose of providing a supplemental general fund operating appropriation, an amount of $600,000 to the Health Department, Service 316, to provide funding for additional operating expenses and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokcine Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0086, general fund operating appropriation transfer, transferring the aggregate amount of $3,830,000 from various agency services to the Health Department and MR educational grants, for the purpose of transferring a general fund operating appropriation in the aggregate amount of $3,830,000 from various agency services to the Health Department, and the aggregate amount of $900,000, and to MR educational grants, and the aggregate amount of $2,930,000, and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokcine Clark.
This bill is approved. Third reader will be held one meeting.
City Council Bill 17-0049, plan new development designation overlook at Roland Park, for the purpose of approving the application, Blue Ocean Realty, contract purchaser of certain property located at Ward 29, Section 15, Block 4020E, Lot 021, to have the property designated a residential plan, new development, and approving the development plans submitted by the applicant.
Our third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 17-0054, franchise brideway over Center Street for the purpose of granting a franchise to MD 601 North Calvert LLC to use and maintain an existing elevated brideway that is located above and across Center Street approximately 120 feet east of Calvert Street, subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokcine, Clark, Scott.
Oh, this bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0055, franchise parking lot with a chain link fence and a portion of the north side of the bed of Bass Street between Calvert Street and Guilford Avenue, for the purpose of granting a franchise to MD North Calvert Street LLC to provide, to use and maintain an existing parking lot located in a portion of the north side of the bed of Bass Street between Calvert Street and Guilford Avenue, where this parking lot adjoins the property of MD North Calvert Street LLC, and to use and maintain an existing chain link fence with a gate along the eastern, southern, and western boundaries of the parking lot, subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokcine, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0063, Citizens Advisory Commission for Public Safety, for the purpose of establishing the Baltimore City Citizens Advisory Commission for Public Safety, providing for the commission's composition, terms of office meeting, quorum officers, and rules of procedures, requiring the commission, in cooperation with the Baltimore City Police Department, to develop annually a community interaction recommendations report specifying the elements of the report and generally relating to the Baltimore City Citizens Advisory Commission for Public Safety. President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokcine, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0066, annual property tax fiscal year 2018, for the purpose of providing a tax for the use of the Marion City Council of Baltimore for the period July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, providing for estimated billings pursuant to state law and setting the semi-annual payment service charge for that period. President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokcine, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0082, operating budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018, for the purpose of approving the budget estimated to be needed for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for operating programs during fiscal 2018, providing for certification of the budget, approved budget, to the state superintendent of schools, and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Rice Singer, Costello, Stokcine, Clark.
This bill is approved. I would like to thank Chairman Costello, Vice Chair Pinkett, and the entire Budget Committee, along with Karen Kuntz from our office, for a great job of negotiating with the mayor's senior staff and the mayor's office. I particularly like to thank Karan Banks and Karen Stokes, who worked tirelessly with our team to make sure that our shared priorities were realized. I want to thank the entire council for sticking together, 15 council members. I can't remember that in the history of the council except one time, in the 11th hour, I lost eight of them when we were trying to put together a budget that was going to fully fund a lot of things that benefit our youth. I'll never forget that day. But this time, the council stayed steadfast, they stayed strong, and we worked throughout the nights, throughout the weekends, to make sure that we got a budget that showed that our priorities are our youth and that we care about our youth. And I just, I'm overwhelmed today that we stood tall. And people ask, "Is this a win for the council and is this a loss for the mayor?" No, it's a win for our youth of the city of Baltimore because it was some give and take, some back and forth, but we got it done. So Karen and Karan, thank you all for a great job. Chairman Costello, yeoman job. And if you was nervous as the first time, Chairman, it did not show. You really was getting in there, getting it done. I want to thank the Bureau of Budget and Management because without your cooperation, we probably couldn't have really got this deal done. So it was a team effort by all of us to make sure that, we let the young people know that the mayor and this council is serious about making sure there's opportunities for our young people, and I think we have done that tonight. And this is the first time that I can remember, and I was a budget chair, that we finished this budget two weeks ahead of time. And I think that was a great accomplishment, even though we had to go back and forth over our priorities two weeks before. It's great. Let's give yourselves a hand. And at this time, Chairman, if you would like to have some remarks, I would extend that to you before I recognize the chairman, I mean, the Chairman of Education Committee who has a guest he would like to bring to the floor to counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you to everyone on the committee, especially Vice Chairman Pinkett. Thank you to all of our colleagues for sticking together. There's definitely power in that and there's something to be said. And I also want to thank, obviously, Marguerite and Kara, who worked tirelessly, Karan and Karen. Most importantly, I want to thank Mayor Pugh for demonstrating that she is a true partner and that she does share our priorities. And I think I can speak for everyone when I say that we all are looking forward to continuing to work together and help move our city forward. So please pass that back to the mayor. Thank you.
Chair, recognize Chairman Cohen.
President, thank you. I move to extend floor privileges to my special guest.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to the guest of Chairman Cohen, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Mr. Chair, your guests may take the floor.
It represented a profound moment of unity between the council and the communities we serve. Over 630 young people from across Baltimore came together to lift up their voices at our education hearing on Tuesday. They were thoughtful, they were respectful, they were organized, and their message was clear. They were counting on us to restore funding for their vital programs, and we delivered. I am honored to be part of a council that had the fortitude to fight for children. I'm grateful for your leadership, Mr. President, for Chairman Costello's leadership in leading our negotiation, for Mayor Pugh and her team, and for all of our colleagues that remained steadfast. I'm also grateful to Melissa Shober, a mom whose daughter Ruth suffered a stroke and was saved by United Education Corp, the after-school provider for her community school. Like a great mom, Melissa consistently reminded us that we had an obligation to her daughter and to children across Baltimore. And we extend our best wishes to Ruth, who is having a wonderful recovery. I'm also grateful to the 620 citizens that came out on Tuesday to express their support, to Build and Gwen Brown, who's here, and finally, to the phenomenal Soccer Without Borders program, which Councilman Scott loves almost as much as I do. Rosa Mamo is a young woman from Eritrea who came to the United States with her family and made a home here in Baltimore. On Tuesday, she advocated for our priorities, and tonight, I wanted to bring her up to say a few words. Rosa, thank you for being a role model for kids across Baltimore.
Hello, my name is Rosa Mamo and I am from Eritrea. I have been in Soccer Without Borders for over a year. I love SWB because they have become my second family. My family came to the U.S. to get us a good education and more freedom. When I first came to Baltimore, I didn't have many friends. I also didn't feel safe. Refugees were attacked and robbed in my neighborhood. I only feel safe when I'm at SWB because I have made new friends and learned how to be a leader and make the changes I want to see in my community. SWB gives all new students the same opportunities. Last week, I spoke at the Youth Voices Rising Hearing. It was so special that a middle schooler like me had the opportunity to stand up for what is right. I want to thank the Baltimore City Council for standing up for youth like me and protecting funding for programs like Soccer Without Borders. I also want to thank Mayor Pugh for doing the right thing and investing in Baltimore's youth.
Great job. Let's give another hand. Are there any committee announcements? Chair, recognize Chairman Rice Singer.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land, Use, and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 17-0042 on Wednesday, July 12, at 1:45 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a zoning, it's a conditional use conversion of a one-dwelling unit to a two-dwelling units in the R8 zoning district with a variance located at 2304 North Fulton Avenue. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill 17-0062, Wednesday, July 12, at 2 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a zoning, conditional use conversion of a one-dwelling unit to a two-dwelling units in the R8 zoning district at 2216 Utah Place. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill 17-0061, Wednesday, July 19, at 1 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a zoning, a conditional use parking, open off-street area located at 4603 Pall Mall Road. Also, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill 17-0070, Wednesday, July 19, at 1:15 p.m. in the council chambers. Zoning, conditional use parking, open off-street area at 1120, 1122, 1124, 1126 Clarkson Street, and 112, 114, 116, and 118 Selina Place. Mr. President, I move the suspending of rules 10-2 and 10-3.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of suspending rules and Nelson, hear me say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion, current Chair, recognize Chairman Rice Singer.
The committee will hold a hearing on Bill 17-0083 on Wednesday, July 19, at 1:30 p.m. This is a zoning, use regulations for gas station, the purpose of providing that gas stations in the C2 and C3 zoning districts require a conditional use approval by ordinance of the mayor and city council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcements, committee announcements. Chair, recognize Councilman Scott. Oh, no, okay. Regular announcements. First of all, I want to thank the Finance Director, sorry for not recognizing you, who was with us today. He wanted the budget and stuff done so we can get those tax bills out. So we delivered to you earlier than expected. So make sure you get those tax bills out on time. All right. We just sworn in our youth commissioners, and I said to all of them to stay engaged with each of you, each council member, and with my office, and let us know their thoughts and what it is that we can do to help them. Because if anybody can reach young people, it's young people. So as they reach out to you, I hope and pray that we all reach back out to them and listen to them, listen to their ideas. If they have any legislation that they want us to introduce on behalf of the youth, let's make sure that we sit down and talk with them and get that done. We're serious about making sure that our youth are engaged with this body, and I know that the mayor is open to them being engaged with her office. So I'm encouraging the young people, if you're listening, our office is open for you. Let us know exactly what it is we can do to help you be productive in the city of Baltimore. And as you go away to college, we don't want you to live in those other cities and those other states. We want you to come back and make a difference in the city of Baltimore because our young people need to see you, because you can let them know that your surroundings should not dictate your outcome. And we're counting on you to be that role model for kids all over the city of Baltimore. And with that, I recognize Councilman Brandon Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise first to say a simple reminder that the Public Safety Committee will have a hearing tomorrow at 1 p.m. with the Health Department about the Zika virus. We're going to be updated on where we stand with the Zika virus. And I also rise to unfortunately say that we have thus far had 153 homicides in the city of Baltimore and asked Council Vice President Middleton to ask for a moment of silence for those victims and their families. Last week, we, the council, made the call for a comprehensive gun violence strategy in Baltimore, and we'll be talking more about in the future, but right now, we need some change and some action. We need some change in action, some changing to the strategy that we have on the streets today because it isn't working. This is not a personal attack on anyone, but this is the truth, the tough truth that needs to be heard because in order for Baltimore and safety to be, again, become a priority and a reality, we need changes. The folks that are on the streets of Baltimore committing crimes with guns over and over again are too comfortable. It's like they're sitting on a golf course. They don't feel like anyone's going to challenge them on what they're doing, when they're doing it, and how they're doing it. And we need that change to come, not tomorrow, not 10 days from now, not 15 days from now, not a year from now, but right now, so that we can get some control on the streets of Baltimore. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair, recognize Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Generally, I've been focusing in these announcements on upcoming arts things, but I tend to couch it as arts and culture, and so tonight, I want to just mention a cultural event, an annual event in Baltimore City that I'm thankful to be able to participate in year after year, the Baltimore Pride Festival, which is, there are ongoing activities as we speak and throughout the next couple of weeks, but this weekend is the big festival weekend. On Saturday, the parade and the annual block party, which this year will be held in the northern end of the Station North, southern end of the northern end of the Station North, southern of Charles Village, the blocks just north and around Charles and North Avenue. And then Sunday, the annual big party in Druid Hill Park. I just wanted to read something because I think that the, the letter from the directorship of Baltimore Pride Festival this year is really, it hits on notes that I think that we all stay focused on here, and I just want to read a little bit from their annual letter about this. It says, "As we observe pride in Baltimore in 2017, we're forced to recognize why observing pride continues to be important. In Baltimore, our celebration transcends the parties, parades, and performances. In Baltimore, our celebration is much more than bright colors, loud music, and flashy outfits. In Baltimore, our pride is a celebration of survival. We celebrate that in spite of injustice, corruption, hatred, or apathy, we continue to exist, we continue to grow, we continue to mobilize, we continue to love one another, and we continue to love ourselves." And it goes on to say, "This year's theme, Pride Unleashed, remarks on our commitment to challenge old methods, to dismantle archaic structures, to break with tradition, to work boldly, and to live freely." And I'm thankful to try to pursue these values here in this city council, and I hope you all come out to Pride Festival this weekend. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. A moment of silence for the victims and families of the 153 victims of this city and hoping and praying that we don't have any more. And our next council meeting is on June 19.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the 13th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.